Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting, or what we call the voting meeting, of the Board of Education for February 24th, 2020. We've got some nice things on the agenda tonight, so we're going to get right into it with our roll call. Mrs. Bonnefield.
Mrs. Bradford.
Here.
Mrs. Burton, here. Mr. Centers.
Here.
Mrs. Frank.
Here.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Here.
Mrs. Bonnefield is here. President Johnson.
Here. We do have a quorum. And Pledge of Allegiance, and Mrs. Bradford, would you appear to lead us tonight?
I would like to. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, welcome to all in attendance tonight. Thank you for coming. We appreciate it. For those of you who want to follow along with the agenda, and I see some of you already have them, anyone else who wants one can exit the left door and turn to the right, and you will see a table. On the table is also our blue slips for anyone who wants to address the board. If you would fill out the blue slip and give it to anyone at the table, and it will get to me, and we will address that when we get to audience communication. For those of you watching at home, you can go to our website, www.lavoniapublicschools.org, and you can highlight over the Board tab, and you will see a tab that says Board Meeting Information, and if you click on that, you will see a little tab down on the left that says Meeting Agendas, and if you click on that, you can follow along with us this evening. And as I said, we do have some interesting things on the agenda tonight. One of the things that I always do before we start our meetings is I like to reiterate our district climate goal, and that says that all students will experience a positive, safe, and welcoming environment where both students and adults respect and value one another. And we sometimes say, well, what does that look like? That looks like the board, and it looks like our cabinet, and it looks like our people and our audience. It's respect for each other. We may not always have the same opinion on things, and we frequently don't have the same opinion as a board, but we respect and value each other's opinion. We do it respectfully, and we generally come to a consensus, and there's always some compromise. I think that's become a dirty word nowadays in our society, and we have to have a little give and take and respect each other's positions. And we will respect anyone who comes before the board, and we ask for that same respect from you as well. So we'll get right into it. Our first item is Item Three, our Communications, and Item A is our Principal Week Resolution. And I need a motion at this time.
President Johnson.
Mrs. Burton.
Move that the Board of Education of the Lavonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached resolution establishing the week of February 24th, 2020, as Principals' Week in Lavonia Public Schools.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Bradford. And I'll turn it over to Mrs. Jenkins.
Thank you. Good evening, President Johnson, members of the Board, Superintendent Oquist. Tonight, we would like to take a few moments to recognize a special group of staff members here in LPS. Our dedicated principals continue to amaze us with their passion, their compassion, their creativity, and their obvious love for education and for our schools. Our principals take the lead. They set the tone for our students and staff. They provide guidance, leadership, and show their professionalism in all that they do each day. Our principals can be found walking our hallways, connecting with students, rallying our school spirit, cheering on our teams, calming a nervous youngster, assuring a nervous parent, applauding a performance, or just offering a listening ear. Our principals take ownership in creating learning environments in which students feel safe, connected, challenged, and cared for in all of our schools. Each year, our district designates an official week to recognize their efforts. It's called Principals' Week, imagine that, which we are kicking off here tonight with a special resolution, which will be read into the record and voted upon by the Board. If I could please ask Churchill High School Principal Kevin Eteu to join me at the podium. Mr. Eteu is co-president of a group called LEEDs, and that is the Educational Administrators Group to which our principals belong. And if I could also ask Board Vice President Colleen Burton to join us at the podium to read the special resolution we've prepared.
I was asked to read this resolution and honored to do so. Having three children over an eight-year span, we've been in a lot of buildings, we have seen a lot of principals, and the most important thing that as a parent I see principals doing, from a parent perspective alone, is setting the tone for the building. There are various needs, and the needs in elementary are different than that of middle school and different than that of high school, and even from building to building, those needs vary. But we've seen different personalities, and everyone brings their own personality to the job, but the personality of our principals really does set the tone of our buildings and is so vital. And I have to give kudos to principals, because really, it's a pretty difficult job to be the center hub between staff, parents, and students. And we'd like to say that those are always in sync, and much of the time, they are, but there are times when a little bit of give and take is required. And as a principal, you are the singular person that buck stops here. It's got to be with our principals and our buildings. So thank you very much for all that you as a principal do, and all the principals in all of our buildings. It's a vital role, and it's so important and so appreciated.
Lavonia Public Schools Board of Education Principals' Week Resolution. Whereas Principals' Week is dedicated to recognizing the significant contributions of Lavonia Public Schools' school principals and the commitment to providing quality educational experiences and guidance for their students. And whereas energetic and inspiring school leadership is essential if schools, teachers, and support staff are to implement college and career-ready standards and assessments. And whereas principals play a vital role in the success of students and act as the liaison between the school and the community that it serves. And whereas we join with educators, parents, and students to raise awareness of the importance of educational leadership. Now therefore, be it resolved, the trustees of the Lavonia Public Schools' Board of Education recognize the week of February 24th, 2020, as School Principals' Week, and encourage all citizens to thank and support the efforts of school principals in our community.
Thank you, Vice President Burton, President Johnson, and Board of Education members for this Principals' Week Resolution in recognition of the outstanding work not only our school principals do on a daily basis, but for all our district administrators and LEEDs members. As we know, this profession, as all professions in education, is not self-serving, but a calling, a desire to serve others, to be the one piece of the puzzle, that faction that helps shape every student that walks the hallways of an LPS school. Over the years, the role of a principal has evolved to a more holistic profession in which the culture we create becomes essential to the level of success of our students and staff. Our greatest joys are those moments when we see them succeed, no matter how big or how small that success is. So again, on behalf of LEEDs members, district administrators, and school principals, I thank Superintendent Oquist, President Johnson, and the Board of Education for this recognition. Thank you very much.
I'm going to keep Kevin up here while I conclude. So thank you for those wonderful words. So I encourage everyone, if you're in the schools at all this week in particular, give your principals a high five or a grateful handshake for all that they do for our students and our staff in our district. Now I'd like to turn it over to Mrs. Oquist, who would like to make a few comments as well.
Thanks so much, Mrs. Jenkins. Mr. Eteu, thank you for being here tonight on behalf of all of your administrative colleagues in the district. The role of principal, or athletic director, or coordinator is essential. You're not only the face of the school, but really the heartbeat of the school community. And Mrs. Burton certainly talked about setting the climate and setting the tone, and the role of principal is tremendously challenging on some days, but also enormously rewarding. And we are so grateful. We have such tremendously dedicated leaders in our district who care deeply about their students, who are advocates for their staff, and you really do bring to life our mission, our vision, and our district priorities each and every day. So we are so grateful for the work that each of you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eteu. Do we have any comments or questions from the Board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Bradford, to adopt the Principals' Week Resolution. And Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, motion carries. Again, thank you, Kevin, for being here tonight. So that'll take us to Item 3B, the LPS Education Foundation Update. Mrs. Jenkins.
Yes, thank you, President Johnson. As you know, our district is so fortunate to have such great support from the LPS Education Foundation. From classroom grants to the unique Competitive Edge College Savings Program for students and families, the foundation's mission is to enhance the resources within our district to benefit our students and staff. And what an incredible job they do for our schools. Normally, we invite the foundation to offer an annual update in the spring, but they have some news that is so exciting, they just could not wait any longer. Don't worry, they will be back in the spring to offer their annual update as well. At this time, I would like to ask Mrs. Lorna Durand to join me at the podium. Lorna is the president of the foundation. She's also a retired LPS administrator, and just one of the many tireless volunteers who keep the wheels turning from day to day and from year to year in the foundation. Also joining us this evening in a supporting role is Mrs. Diane Paliselli, immediate past president, and I see Melody Provinger. She's a director?
Yes, well, she will be.
They're roping her in. So thank you all for being here tonight, and I'll turn it over to Mrs. Durand.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Jenkins. Good evening, President Johnson, Board members, and Superintendent Oquist. It's my pleasure to be here tonight to introduce Aubrey McFarlane, the new part-time executive director of the LPS Education Foundation. As Stacy said, and I will restate it, as you are aware, the mission of the foundation is to enlarge the resources available to the school district, which will foster and expand educational opportunities for programs impacting students by building effective collaboration. Currently, our two major programs are the Competitive Edge and the Grant Program. The Competitive Edge was initiated during the 2008-2009 school year. The foundation provides an opportunity for the family of each kindergarten student to set up an IRS Section 529 savings plan for college. At no cost to the families, we deposit $100 and add funds to each cohort class as future budgets allow. And we're pretty excited, because currently, we have 3,300 enrolled in the Competitive Edge program. So this year, we also will award the first allocation to our very first cohort group. This program is possible through the generosity of our founding corporate partners, corporate donors and individuals in the community, district employees, retirees, alumni, and PTAs and PTSAs. The second program is the Grant Program, which began in 2013, and thus far has awarded 130 grants for a total of over $242,000 to district staff. The Grant Program is funded by staff payroll deductions, corporate donors, and community and individual donors. corporate donors, and community and individual donors, as well as donations from the foundation itself. As the Board of Directors reviewed our goals and our programs, we began to discuss and address the issue of sustainability. We also began to discuss the possibility of hiring a part-time director, executive director, to not only sustain our two major programs, but also to look at increasing funding for those programs, as well as addressing our mission of expanding the educational opportunities for programs impacting students. Last fall, we made the decision to hire an executive director, and we began the recruitment and the interview process. We had a number of very qualified individuals. And it's my honor and just a few moments to introduce Aubrey to you as our choice and our employee. Aubrey has held executive positions in management and nonprofit organizations during the last 24 years. She holds degrees in social work from the University of Michigan. Now, this is just an aside, I am a Spartan. It's hard for me to say, no, go green. In addition, she is a Livonia resident and has two children enrolled in Livonia Public Schools. Aubrey's been working with the foundation since the beginning of January. I can't say enough, we are extremely pleased with her work ethic, her familiarization of the foundation, its goals, its policies, its board members, as well as her desire to meet district staff and community members. We begun the process of introducing Aubrey to the community in a variety of ways. So as I stated earlier, it is my pleasure to introduce her to the Board of Education tonight. Aubrey, thank you.
Thank you to the Board of Education for having me here tonight. This is a true honor, and thank you to Lorna for that very gracious introduction. I am absolutely honored to be a part of the foundation. As you know, it has been volunteer-run and led by a powerhouse group of people for the last 15 years. And to be able to come on as the first paid employee to reach towards sustainability, but to also increase the effectiveness and enhance the amount of dollars coming into the district is really great, particularly because this is my community, and this is where my kids reside and go to school. So it really is a perfect match for me and with my experience, which I really look forward to bringing that expertise to the foundation. We're moving quickly, so I hope that you will see some results of hiring me on and bringing me together with LPS and with the foundation very quickly. And I am ambitious and ready to see success both for the district and for the foundation. I'm grateful again to be able to enhance it moving forward and to really focus on the mission. And I really want to thank LPS, in addition to the cabinet, Mrs. Oquist, et cetera, for being so welcoming and absolutely accommodating. It really is a tremendous partnership that the foundation has with the district that you don't always see between two different nonprofits. So I appreciate everything, the generosity, the welcoming, the environment in which I'm working. It really couldn't match my expertise and my desires for a job better. So thanks for having me tonight.
Any comments from the board? I have just a few. I had the honor and privilege of being on the committee that interviewed Aubrey, and we did have some outstanding candidates. And Aubrey just stood out from the others. And to say she's jumped in with both feet would be an understatement. She's taken the bear by the horns or the bull by the horns and is really jumping and doing a great job. So we appreciate everything you do and what the foundation does for us. We couldn't survive without you. Thank you.
President Johnson?
Mrs. Oquist?
I'll just echo those comments and, one, commend our previously volunteer-led foundation for, as you said, 15 years. It is amazing what this group of volunteers have done for so many, many years on behalf of our students. And I am thrilled, Aubrey, that you have come on board and that you are joining such a spectacular team who are truly committed to our students, our schools, and our community. And I have been so impressed in such a short time with the expertise and ideas and commitment that Aubrey has already shown. So I am very excited for the next 15 years for our foundation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Oquist.
You're welcome.
All right, we'll move on to Item 3C, Points of Pride: LPS Behavior Intervention Support. Mrs. Jenkins?
Thank you, President Johnson. Each month, as you know, we bring forth a feature that we call Points of Pride. This is just one of the ways in which we highlight the programs and people who represent our purpose, our passion, and our pride within Livonia Public Schools. Tonight, we are shining the spotlight on a team of professionals within our district who work specifically on student behaviors. They are called, you guessed it, behavior interventionists. And they play a crucial role in student success and in upholding the climate and culture within our schools. They are simply an amazing team. It's my pleasure to introduce the team at this time. So as I call you, they're in the back row. Please welcome behavior intervention specialists Sarah Jacobson and Rick Dubay. And joining them is Student Services Coordinator Libby Rogowski.
Hi. Thank you to Superintendent Oquist, and I went backwards. So thank you to President Johnson and the board for allowing me the opportunity to introduce two very special Livonia employees, Sarah Jacobson and Rick Dubay, our behavior specialists and truly our specialists. Sarah started with us last fall, and Rick joined our team in December. The impact these two individuals are making at our building levels with our students, families, and staff each and every day has been outstanding and just exceeded all expectations. I'm gonna turn the floor over to both of them to go back and forth to talk a little bit more about themselves, their history, and how they got here and what they're doing in our buildings and in our district each day.
Well, thank you, Libby. Although I'm new to the role, only two months, 18 years in Livonia. I started here in 2002, and I haven't looked back. It's, time flies. I started at Frost Middle School the first two years. I actually taught PE and health. And I found myself very intrigued in staying after school and enjoying working with the students in the special education program. So I thought at the time, well, now is the time to change, because you're only two years into your career. So I backed out of the Ed Leadership degree, and I went and got a master's in special education with an emphasis in cognitive impairments. I also received a couple endorsements in special ed as well. From there, I went to Stevenson High School, and I taught for seven years, team teaching, mainly chemistry and physics. So it was a big change from PE, but I loved it. But again, I found myself, I'm working with the general education population and the special education population, but I found myself geared more towards students that just need a little bit more. So a good fit for me, I thought, there became an opportunity at the Western Wayne Skill Center, where I took my skills over there and had a great time. What a wonderful place to work as well. And I had an opportunity to be the behavior consultant the last five years. Very, very good experience. From there, within those five years, the past four years, I was on our behavior response team that I'm currently on, our crisis prevention team, and then also our district leadership team. And then, like I said, the last two months, I had the opportunity to apply for this job and have really been fortunate to work with Sarah Jacobson and enjoyed it quite a bit. May I turn it over to Sarah?
Thanks, Rick. Well, our team is working on the technical difficulties there. We do have a fun picture to show you eventually. But, so I'm Sarah Jacobson. Unlike Rick, I come from the behavioral background, not the academic background of, there we are, of education. So I'll explain the refing outfits in a minute. But, so my degree's in psychology and social work as well from U of M. And I focused on, sorry, U of M, but fellow social work, U of M grad, so go blue. So I started in the mental health field through Downriver Guidance Clinic in Southgate, and then got into the Allen Park Public School District. From there, jumped over to South Redford. And this opportunity that came up through Livonia as a behavior specialist, which really I think is a cutting-edge forefront. You're one of the few districts in Wayne County that have behavior specialists. So I appreciate the progressiveness and the being on the forefront of recognizing some of the cases that we deal with and some of the toughest kids that really need our help. So that was a wonderful opportunity for me to come over and expand my wings and help out in Livonia, and I've loved it. I haven't looked back on this, and I'm thankful that I have a teammate now with Rick and all of his experience too at the Skill Center. So with, go ahead and click the next slide, oh, the refing uniforms. So Rick and I, we do a little side volunteer job, refing the Unified Churchill and Franklin Unified Basketball Teams. Franklin had a game today, so we do that, it's just our special ed background, and it's a lot of fun. If you don't know about the Unified Teams, that's another presentation probably for another meeting. So, thank you. The community of character elements is really the world that Rick and I live in. So these traits that we've adopted as a school district and that so many of our staff and families support, Rick and I just live this. So it's looking at the whole child, not just at the high test scores, not at the graduation rates, not at the highest ACT or SAT or, you know, who's valedictorian, but really it's about these productive citizens and looking at who do we want in our workforce and who do we want contributing to our community. So Rick and I live in this behavior world where empathy and respect and mindfulness and integrity and all these things that President Johnson talked about earlier with respect. This is what we try to do to help support our teachers and our families and instill in our kids. So with those respectful interactions, we appreciate this poster and this mindset that has been, I think, a few years probably before I even got here. So it helps guide our efforts and really helps guide the efforts in the schools that we work in. So, go ahead and click. So again, I mentioned that Livonia really was one of the four leaders in Wayne County in addressing some of these behavior problems, which are not unique to Livonia. They're not unique to Wayne County. They're not unique to Michigan. They're happening all over our country. I've seen news reports of kids who are really struggling to just manage themselves and just being able to make sense of their world so that they're not disrupting their own education. They're not disrupting the education of their fellow students and teachers. So recognizing that our kids are coming in at younger, younger ages, or younger and younger ages with fewer self-regulation skills. How to be patient, how to get along with people, how to solve problems, which maybe you and I've learned, you know, from climbing trees or playing games in our backyards, which many of our kids are not doing these days. And there's another presentation about the reasons for this, but Rick and I don't have time to get into that. So we're dealing with the behaviors as they come into our schools and really trying to help our teachers and our staff. And our parents also help regulate these kids so that they can stay in class and learn. And obviously, some of the overall goals that we have for Livonia is just looking at keeping our behavior rates, our behavior discipline referrals down, decreasing our suspension rates, looking at alternatives to suspension, and how to rethink discipline. So some of these buzzwords that you may have been hearing about, how do we rethink discipline? How do we instill a trauma-informed classroom or school? How do we do restorative practices rather than just punitive practices? Giving a kid a three-day suspension to go home and play video games may not be the best way for that kid to learn how to repair this harm that may have been caused. So, go ahead and click the next one. So again, Libby said that I came on board last, it was September of 2018. So last year, I was able to help out on 62 different cases in 21 of our 24, I think, buildings. And then Rick, so far, Rick and I have been able to consult on about 53 cases. So that's 53 teams, 53 kids, whose teams are really supportive and really trying hard to keep these kids in school, keep these kids learning, keep these kids' behaviors in check, and really help them get these self-regulation skills. We link with community agencies, wraparound. We do professional development to work, everything from our pair pros to our administrators, how to help manage a kid who's just, you know, completely lost it. So these are some of the things that Rick and I really are passionate about. And then one of the last things that we work with, the Stucky Day Treatment Center. So some of our kids that really have not been able to be successful in our LPS schools that we need to refer out to a more intensive center program. We have, I think, probably 20 or 30-some of those students there right now. So with that, I think the next one is a few of our initiatives, and I have to give props to our LPS Foundation. So they helped with five of our grants that I helped write for, I'm sorry, five of our elementary buildings are working on this social-emotional learning grant called Caring School Community. And it's teaching all these social skills that some of our kids are really lacking. Just like I said, getting along with other people, being able to solve their problems, being able to wait, being able to cooperate. So that's a whole school initiative, which five of our schools up there, you can see, are piloting. There's another program called Y Try, which is kind of zeroing in on the kids who are probably most at danger of failing or most at danger of dropping out. So really trying to get them to connect and feel a sense of belonging and attachment to that school, and working with them on what is going on in their lives that is really hard for them. Some of these kids come in with so much baggage that we have no idea what has gone on in their past. We may have some idea, depending on what they've shared, but it's well below the surface. And being able to reach these kids on a level that Jimmy Cassis had talked about at the beginning of the school year, like building these relationships, which Rick is gonna go into in a minute. But some of the initiatives you can see up here, just working on trauma-informed care, talking about these adverse childhood experiences, whether it's abuse, divorce, having incarcerated parents, living with somebody who's got a mental illness or alcoholism, which is not necessarily unique to any minority population or any socioeconomic population. It runs rampant throughout any population. And then restorative practices, I mentioned a little bit, rethinking discipline differently. How do we keep kids in school? And how do we help them learn how to repair the harm that they may have caused from being in a fight or being disrespectful to a teacher or disrupting the education of their peers? And positive behavior intervention support, you may have heard a little bit about that. It's really a foundational piece for many of our schools. It is infused, is part of the restorative practices and the trauma-informed care, and it's part of the social-emotional learning too. It just helps create that structure and sort of the bones of what's expected. What does it look like to be respectful in the cafeteria, in the hallway, in the bathroom? What does it mean to be responsible in the cafeteria, the hallway, the bathroom? What does it mean to be safe in the cafeteria, hallway, bathroom? So this PBIS really is a foundational piece, which helps support all of the work that Rick and I are doing. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to Rick to talk a little bit more about some of the other programs that we're doing.
Okay, so the first thing we kind of think is behavior is communication. And what better way to communicate than to just build relationships? So we really like to focus when we're working with students and staff on what it means to build relationships, like meeting, greeting students at the door, making connections with them, taking time to get to know your students. Like if they stay with their mom on Fridays, but they are with dad on Tuesday, Thursday, you know, what's the difference when they come to school? Also, classroom design, setup of sensory tools. So when they're setting up their classroom, do they have a horseshoe shape where everybody feels welcome in the classroom? Or is it everybody's staggered behind one another? Do they have maybe a student that needs a little quieter area? Do they have them in a carol? Do they have them close to a window? Maybe a student can't have distractions. So are there too many things going on in the room? So just really looking at that classroom setup. And then we like to think prevention first, right, before interventions? So we talk a little bit about active supervision, OTRs, which are opportunities to respond, really giving students an opportunity to be part of, you know, engaged, part of that classroom discussion rather than talking to students, talking with them. Also, giving students responsibilities. So a lot of times, our students come into classrooms, and they're wondering, what do I do? You know, maybe that first five minutes or even that first minute. Well, right off the bat, I know it's my job to do this. It's my job to do this. Just helping them with those little things. Especially, I'm thinking about our new teachers. 18 years ago, I just wanted to know that, oh my gosh, who's in my class? What time does it start? What time does it get over? But we all know that's not how it works. There's a lot more going on when we walk in that classroom. Also, helping initiate, implement, facilitate men's clubs, women's clubs, social clubs, especially in the high schools. And just talking about stuff like respecting yourself, respecting others, respecting authority, making a friend, maintaining a friend, these important things that I think sometimes get lost. And some people think that, you know, well, no one likes me because I'm different, or I don't have any friends, I don't play any sports. So just helping students with this. And a lot of our buildings already have this peer-to-peer, so utilizing that within the groups. And then strategies for avoiding power struggles. You know, I thought about this today. So we were at Frost Middle School, and we were talking with a group of students. And a young lady, there was an inappropriate comment that was made. An eighth-grade girl, we talked, well, what do you do when that happens? And she said, you don't fight fire with fire. Perfect. You know, and that's really what we're talking about when we're talking about strategies for avoiding power struggles, just getting the teachers sometimes, talking to them about taking a step back. Give it a minute. Don't react. Give it time, and then respond. And then de-escalation, and, you know, Sarah talked a little bit about the self-regulation, but how do I self-regulate? Do I need a break? Do I need music? Do I need to ask to just step out for a second? Do I need to teach myself to just breathe? Is it okay to fail? Is it okay to make a mistake? We all know that we're not gonna really make any gains if we don't take any steps backwards. But if we can take two steps forward every time, we're gonna be ahead. So just teaching students that it's okay for that and getting them through that. Because sometimes some of our students... and getting them through that. Because sometimes some of our students, maybe they never fail, maybe they're the best at everything they did. Discipline with dignity, this is really important to myself. When, when we are doing discipline, we're not, we're not shaming somebody in front of all their peers. Maybe we're doing it privately, maybe, again, we're waiting a few minutes, then we're talking to them. So, it's not right in front of everyone because we know that that can be pretty, pretty shameful. Help facilitate postvention debriefs, meeting with students after crisis and meeting with staff after crisis. I think this is, this is crucial. We know that when there is a crisis, whether it's minor or major, it's very easy to go in, help the staff, help the students, everybody's on the right page, but what are we doing afterwards? You know, what kind of postvention are we having? Are you okay? What do you need? Those type of things. So, right now, we're in a situation where we're doing that. And quite honestly, I, I think just in the first two months of being in this position, we've done that several times. So, and I also believe from the bottom of my heart, it's a forgotten piece for staff. We really focus on the students because we have to be here, they need us, they can't see us cry, they can't see us upset, they just need to see a happy face, they need to see us motivated. So, I think we really have to focus on taking care of those staff as well. And then, last but not least, I think that often when you hear the term behavior, I think associated with it, you'll hear terms like behavior difficulties, behavior problems, very negative. So, we want to kind of do a Sarah-Rick twist and put a little positive twist on it. And we go to the last slide. And we want people to start thinking behavior support, behavior solutions, behavior success. We hope that after when we work with these groups, we get to know students, we make those meaningful connections, meaningful relationships. And not only are we preaching and teaching, they're seeing it with us. We're coming back. It's not just a one-time, hey, they were here and they're washing their hands. We're, we're in it to win it with them. So.
Mr. Centers.
So, I think you touched on, on something that's really apparent, is there is a lot of pressure on our teachers right now. There's a lot more curriculum, there's standardized tests, there's a lot for them to do. And, you know, there's also a lot of tremendous challenges with students. And our teachers sometimes need help, right? Our school community, our students, everyone needs a little help sometimes. So, having obviously wonderful, qualified and thoughtful individuals doing that is reassuring. And we're, I'm very excited about the work you're, you're doing and starting and very glad to have you both here in this current role. So, thank you for all you're doing.
Mrs. Bonfield.
I want to thank you guys very much. I think one of the biggest things that we have forgotten and lost with the trouble with our school funding is that we've lost a lot of this ability to reach these kids on different levels and in, in different areas. I was lucky enough that my now-twenty-two-year-old was in second grade right before things really took a nosedive. And he was diagnosed with a emotional, just a slight emotional impairment. But he could have easily have been labeled a bully and you, you get what you, you know, you, you, right, people believe what you tell them, right? So, if you're telling them you're a bully, 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 bully. We were so lucky with LPS to be able to get some intervention work. We were so proud of him. We were up at Carnival at Michigan Tech a couple of weeks ago, and he said to us, he goes, he goes, I recognize when I'm angry. And he says, I can now, he, I can step back. And we were so proud of him. And without those kind of behavioral interventions where he learned how to, it was about the coping mechanisms and how about, how to recognize things. And we have so many external factors. I think, again, with the school funding, is we think the kids come to school, they're ready to learn. And they're there, and they have all this support at home, and they have all the examples on how to behave and, and, and how to interact with people, and they don't. And there are so many of these kids, I think, if they just have the support that you guys are giving them, and we have more and more of that in the schools, that we can reach these kids and touch these kids, make them feel like they're, that they really can do good and be good and be those kids and, and learn those coping mechanisms. And, you know, it, you may only have reached, well, I know you've reached more than kids in it, but you had, you said you had fifty-three cases so far this year. But how does that go into, you know, you've reached those fifty-three kids. What if those fifty-three kids hadn't been, hadn't, hadn't had this intervention in the behavior, and then the other kids see it, and then it disrupts the classroom? And so, you're touching every single kid in the district, even though you're only able to get hands-on just a few of them. And it's, I think it's one of the most impactful things that we can do. We can get up and, don't get me wrong, teachers, I wouldn't trade places with them for anything. They do, they do an amazing job, but the kids aren't always prepared to come into class to learn. And, and we have such a diverse community here. It's not like we have a really small, like, when I grew up, it was a small farming commi- community. We're all, you know, we're all farm kids. It was all, you know, we have engineers and, and, I mean, we just, we have so much diversity in our, in our demographics that we can't just assume every single kid has the same thing. So, I, I can't tell you how much I appreciate what you guys do and hope that, you know, we can grow this and that, you know, the state recognizes the fact that these are really critical things that we need. These are things that are gonna help our test scores, these are things that are gonna help our education and make these kids successful and really be a part of the whole person. So, anyway, that's my, so.
We also, we also need to give a, a big thank you to Dr. Terrell to her students because she was very instrumental in, in helping grow these, these positions.
It's, it's amazing.
Any other comments? Mrs. Burton.
I'd also like to thank Dr. Terrell for, and, and your whole staff, Jen, for, for bringing the restorative justice into Livonia Public Schools. I know that's a huge push in the state of Michigan right now and for a very, very good reason. It, it just makes logical sense. You, when you think about it with your own child in your, your own home, if, if one child does something to another that's hurtful, you sit down and explain to them, you know, what, what this was, why this is hurtful, and you encourage them and model for them to how to apologize to one another and so forth. And that's, that is just taking that very basic parenting skill and, and bringing it into our school district. Some of the kids have been brought up with that from day one, some have not, and, and a whole lot in between. But it's, it is such a better program than, than just punitive. Several of us had the privilege last week of attending some classes by the Michigan Association of School Boards, and one of them was a, a three-hour-long session just on trauma and the effects of trauma on kids. And what was really interesting to me was some of what you folks were, were mentioning tonight, the, the aces, the, the adverse child experiences. And you think, you know, when I walked into there, I'm thinking to myself, this is a group of kids who have had just a ton of extreme things happen, and it's not. It's, it is, there were probably ten or twelve items and they, this was a room of over a hundred school board members. And asked how many folks, we went through the list of these ten or twelve things that could happen to kids. You know, in extreme, it would be a, a death or an incarceration of a parent, but it's, it's living with a parent or a family member who, who experiences drug or alcohol abuse, it's a family member who may deal with some, some mental issues. But a lot of different things that can go into, into affecting how people function, not only as children but as adults. And what was really enlightening was, again, with, with over a hundred, a hundred and fifty school board members in a room and just with, with our phones, hit yes and no on, on how many of these experiences you've had when you went down the list. Thirty percent of the people in that room had experienced one of the ten or twelve. Twenty percent of the people had experienced two of these triggers. Twenty more percent had experienced three, and thirty percent of the people in that room had experienced four or more. And, and that is a group of people who have, who are representing school districts, and I'm glad that they are because we need people with a variety of experiences to, to represent our districts. But when you, when you realize, you think that it's, that, that thing happens to somebody else, and it's not somebody else, it's everybody that we're in a room with. It's just to what degree? And how good of your coping mechanisms have you been able to develop over your lifetime or not? So, again, Mrs. Bonfield, you've said it better than, than I definitely could. But thank you for the work that you do because it's, it's not something that happens to somebody else or somebody else's kid. These things affect all of us, it's to what degree? But I'm so proud to be in Livonia Public Schools where we now have the funding and are, are utilizing in a manner that can address these, these, the effects of the trauma on kids and help them to predup, to become more productive citizens. So, thank you for the work that you do. It's, it's tough. And like Mrs. Bonfield said, I, I admire the work you do and I don't want to do it, it would drive me nutty sometimes, but thank you for, for the work you do.
Never do a moment.
Yeah, I'm certain. Yeah, but thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Burton. Mrs. Oakley.
Thank you, President Johnson. Thank you both for that presentation. We are so grateful for the work that you're doing. And we are, this was one of the first and I think most important things that our, that our team talked about. And when Jen first brought forward the idea of our district really needing a specialist, someone who really could dive deeply with school staffs or teams or teachers individually to help some of our students who are having the most difficulty regulating their behavior in the classroom. And I have to say, I have to commend our board because you did not blink when we said this was a need. This was one of the highest identified needs as we came forward with our, our first proposals from the Wayne County Enhancement Village of some of the ads. This was a brand-new position, and this was something our district had not had before. But we, we saw that the need existed, explored what that could look like, found an amazing individual in Sarah, and thrilled that she agreed to come to our district. And then, when our board mid-year this year, because of the financial picture we were in, certainly as we've said many times, not more than we need, but more than we had planned, you allowed us to expand some of our expenditures. And one of, one of the first items that our team came forward and recommended was an additional behavior intervention specialist. And to be able to bring Rick on board, who I think many of you probably recognize from our special graduations and visits to the Skill Center, for him to now bring his skill set and for that dynamic duo to begin working together to meet the needs of students and staff is really tremendous. And I have to tell you, you have to get the right people. It's not just a matter of districts adding these positions because we had a team, and Libby is an important part of that, our, our District Behavior Crisis Team. And I know Rick has been a part of that for a number of years. And you have to have the right people doing that work because you're asking teachers sometimes to step out of their comfort zone and to approach things in a way that may be different than they have in the past. We're asking parents to trust us on trying some things behaviorally and support-wise, and certainly, most importantly, our students. And so, to be able to form those relationships and then to be able to take those steps to make an impact has really been, really one of our greatest additions that we have made in the district. So, we're so excited that you came here tonight and shared it with us. And I'm really happy the board got a chance to see more in-depth because we've talked about it, but I think it comes to life when we're able to have, have both of you here, all three of you here. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Great presentation.
Thank you, Mrs. Oakley.
You're welcome.
I'm, I'm glad Mrs. Burton brought up the seminar that we went to. And just to dovetail a little bit off of that, I think it's so important, you know, she talked about the aces and the, the trauma that, that these kids can go through. And so many times, we label them before we know what is causing it. And now, with the advancements, to find out and dig down to, to really determine why they're having the problems, it makes it easier, it's not easy, but a little easier to deal with it. Once you know what's causing it, it's easier to address the problems. And I think it's crucial that we be able to do that with these, with these kids because we all come from different backgrounds. We just don't know why a child may be acting up, why a child may be bullying, why a child is doing certain things. And now, if you can sit down and really dig deep and find out what that problem is, now you can address it. Whereas before, we just would label them. And you were treating the symptoms and not the cause. Now, I think you're treating the cause. So, we, we appreciate everything you do. Thank you. Anything else? If not, then we'll move on to item three D and hear our wonderful update from our outstanding superintendent.
Thank you, President Johnson. We love this part of the night. So, we're gonna share our, share our story and share some positive news of things happening across the district. So, settle in for a few minutes. We'll start with our most recent production by our talented Kappa students. I am off my microphone. Here we are. Thank you. We'll kick off with our, the most recent production, The Curious Incident of the Dog in the Nighttime. So, we'd like to congratulate Director Angie Hillman and this really talented, talented cast who shared this production in their smaller theater called The Black Box. So, some of you have been in there for, for performances. So, last weekend, not this past, but the one before, they had four performances over the course of the weekend and once again, just, just wowed everyone in the crowd. So, kudos to them. We had our PTA Reflections Night, so that's always a great celebration. Mrs. Jarvis is our, a wonderful emcee each year. And I know the majority of our board was able to be there as well to see some of the tremendous talent on display of our students. And then, we had some very excited Reflections Award recipients come up to the stage. And as they made their way up, some, some just sauntered and others ran full bore up to get their award and share in the pride. So, they share their writing and dance and artistic talent, photo and filmmaking. So, it's a great night and they share their creative genius with us. We also just recently celebrated the PTA Founder's Day in the district, really one of the great nights of the year. And over four hundred PTA members from across the district as well as community supporters come together and hosted by our PTSA Council. We recognize students and staff and parents who make a difference in our community. So, another great night and kudos to our, our PTA for putting that on. We just, was that just this week?
Yes.
Yes, just this week. We went to the Chamber of Commerce Leadership and Awards Night. And what a treat. So, our fourth graders from Grant kicked off and were invited to be the entertainment. And they used a set of drums who, that came to them thanks to the foundation via the Grant Program. And so, they played their drums, they danced onstage, including Mrs. Keats, the principal, with their, what should we call those, scarf flags? And they sang some wonderful songs about a papier tree and more. So, Mr. Don Stromberg led them, and we were thrilled. They just brought the crowd to their feet and it was a great way to start the evening. Then, we had the opportunity to recognize Mrs. Antonelli, our Secondary Teacher of the Year, and Mrs. Yost, our Elementary Teacher of the Year. Unfortunately, Mrs. Knopf was not able to be there, our Support Staff Person of the Year, but we did share her praise as well. So, it was a great, great night. We had at the Livonia Career Technical Center, our game design students, Eric and Ben, were the top winners in the Fall STEM Fuse GOT Game Competition. So, the students in that program really continued to wow. Every year, more and more of them are standing out in our, not only in our district but in our region and in the state. So, congratulations to both of them. And in music news, we had students, McCabe Ferguson and Brody Turner were accepted into the Michigan School Vocal Music All-State Honors Choir, which is a very prestigious, very prestigious designation. And then, we had many, many of our high school band and orchestra musicians who scored ones at the District Sol and Ensemble Festival, which was hosted by Franklin. They are often a host for that event, which is quite an undertaking. And those students will now move on to compete at the state level in mid-March. So, we wish them much luck. In gymnastics news, you see some of our gymnastics red folks here who finished second place in the KLAA Conference Meet. And Morgan Ruffing, who is a freshman, took first place all around. So, I would say that bodes well for her in the future. So, congratulations to those hard-working student athletes. So congratulations to those hard-working student athletes. Speaking of scholar athletes, you're not going to believe this stat. So our Stevenson Varsity Girls Basketball Team has an average GPA on their team of 4.26. An average, not a high, an average. And that is not a typo and we'd like to congratulate all of those young ladies who work very, very hard on the court, but off the court as well. And we have Meredith Haig, who won the Michigan Interschool Athletic Administrators Association Scholarship. She is a student athlete at Stevenson High School in volleyball and in soccer. And we are thrilled for her and to represent our district. In wrestling news, I'm going to hop down just a moment. We had Churchill Varsity Wrestling was the 2020 MHSA District Wrestling Champion. And Franklin has three state qualifiers. And I believe that takes place in a couple of weeks? One or two weekends away. So we wish them luck. We are in playoff mania and so we're going to have Stevenson will be kicking off their regional finals and they're also hosting at Eddie Edgar this Wednesday, if you'd like to catch a great game at 6:15. Franklin will be playing out at the Ice Cube in Ann Arbor, playing Gabriel Richard on Wednesday. And then Churchill will take on Allen Park also at the Ice Cube. So. That's right. So you have some great hockey ahead of you, but that starts this week, kicks off the regionals and then moving on. And I am certain that one or more of our teams hopefully will end up at USA Hockey Arena in mid-March. And speaking of our awesome Unified Basketball, the tournament was recently held at Novi last week. And here are some of our student athletes from Churchill who were there. And I'd like to commend really everyone involved, both at Churchill and Franklin with the unified teams, all of the students who participate and certainly our staff who enthusiastically support their efforts. So congratulations to them. In bowling news, we continue, I think we have good bowling news every meeting during the season. I'll tell you, they are rocking it out, rocking in, rolling. Good, good, good. I knew you'd come with me there. So they are going to be competing in the regional competitions this Friday at the Super Bowl in Canton. We had our Franklin team won a big tournament this past weekend and Churchill Bowling as well. Both the girls' and boys' team are doing extremely well. And certainly Stevenson has been in the hunt throughout, so congratulations to all of them. We have series for parents throughout the year, as you know, on different topics. And one important one continues to be the information about concussions. So we have an expert, Dr. Steven Gargens, is that it? Dr. Terrell? Okay. I assume Dr. Terrell knows all things health-related. On Tuesday, February 25th, so. Kerrigan's. Thank you, Kerrigan's. Alrighty. Will be coming and presenting on the topic of concussions. Sorry about that, but the name threw me off. Tomorrow evening in the Franklin PAC. So that is really open to our entire community if you'd like to attend. Next, we have Annie coming up. So we just shared the Kappa performance and the Franklin players will be putting on the production of Annie on March 19th, 20th, and 21st. Tickets are available online, so if you either go to the Franklin website or I believe to our website, Mrs. Jenkins? Yeah, on the front page. It should be a great performance. They are already hard at work, both onstage and backstage, so we're really looking forward to that in just a couple of weeks. Churchill's National Honor Society is hosting a soup night tomorrow night from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. If you are available to attend, you can stop in, make a donation, and receive a hot bowl of soup and a handmade ceramic bowl. And all of the proceeds will benefit St. Leo's Soup Kitchen. So again, that's Churchill's National Art Honor Society, a great event that they have been working on for quite some time. I'd like to give a special shout-out to Mrs. Scott and Mrs. Jenkins and Mrs. O'Brien and many of our secretaries who were part of a special kindergarten registration this past Saturday at Riley. As you know, I believe this is the third year that we've held a Saturday registration. We had over 40 families that signed up to come and register, just to make it a little bit more convenient for them to come in and register for kindergarten on the weekend. And we were excited to welcome our new friends for the 2021 school year. And we have been busy registering in the schools since the 1st of February, but we were very pleased that our team was able to offer this Saturday registration as well. March is Reading Month is coming up, it's kicking off. We have many special guests coming in to read, but at Riley, we will have Governor Gretchen Whitmer, Senator Dana Paul Henke, and Representative Lori Pahutsky, who will all be coming in to the district on March 6th. So we are absolutely thrilled that they've asked to join us in Livonia as guest readers. And we'd like to thank each and every one of our board members and members of our community who will donate their time over this next month. I know the students love to have special visitors come to read to them and they will be all across the district. And kudos to so many of our PTAs and staff members who worked to put on these great March's Reading Month events. Just a reminder that we have our school choice window will be opening on March 2nd and closing on March 31st for a limited number of seats that we have available in the district. And then finally, just a reminder that the Census 2020, that information will be coming out to folks very soon. Mrs. Jenkins, do you have a timeline on that?
March 12.
March 12. That'll be starting coming out, okay. And so we're really, we've been partnering with the City of Livonia, who has asked us to help continue to get the word out because as you know, this is very important on many levels, but certainly not the least important for federal and funding for our city and for our community. So we would like to just remind everyone that our Livonia Pride shines brightly and our hashtag Livonia Pride is what we invite our families, our staff, our students to utilize to celebrate our story in the district.
Thank you, Mrs. Oakwest. And at this point, we're going to take a short five-to-10-minute recess to acknowledge and meet some of our guests tonight. So we'll be back shortly. Thank you.
Thank you, and we are back. And we will move on to item 3E, Written Communications. I do not have any written communications, I don't believe there are any. That takes us to item 3F, Audience Communication. I do not have any blue slips. Does anyone in the audience want to address the board tonight? No blue slips? Okay, just checking. Then that'll take us to item 3G, Response to Prior Audience Communication. I do not have any response. Is there any? I don't believe so. So that will take us then to item 4, Our Consent Agenda. And may I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mr. Centers.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the following consent agenda items as recommended by the superintendent. 5A, minutes of the regular meeting of January 27, 2020. 5B, minutes of the special meeting of January 27, 2020. 5C, minutes of the closed session of January 27, 2020. 5D, minutes of the special meeting of February 10, 2020.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
I will. Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. And that will take us down to item 6, Business Matters. And our item A is Approval to Purchase Lunch Tables for Elementary Schools, 2013 Bond. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase of lunch tables for 13 elementary schools from today's classroom, Canton, Ohio, through the TIPS, T-I-P-S, purchasing program for a total cost of $607,128.48.
Support.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Frank. Mr. Francis is going to help us with this.
Thank you, President Johnson. We have, through the 2013 bond, put in to, or request an order to replace the tables in the lunchrooms. These are the wall tables that are in the wells in the elementary schools, K-4 and Webster and Nigiero. And while it's not currently being used as a traditional elementary school, Garfield Community Schools, which does have the cafeteria with the same types of tables in them. So those are the 13 schools that we're referring to here. And this is a recommended purchase, again, through the Purchasing Consortium, and using, again, the 2013 bond. This was an item, is an item that is of need. We've had, been repairing and welding some of these tables as the legs break, et cetera.
Thank you, Mr. Francis.
You're welcome.
Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Frank, for the approval to purchase lunch tables for elementary schools. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. That takes us to item, let's see, 6B, Approval of Roofing Design and Construction Services from RTA. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the recommendation to award the contract for roofing design and construction services at Hayes Elementary School Summer 2021 Project to Roofing Technology Associates, also known as RTA Livonia, Michigan, for a total cost of $23,444, I'm sorry, $23,444, and authorize the superintendent or her designate to negotiate and execute final contract.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Centers. And Mr. Francis again.
Yes, sir. And just as a brief summation for those who have not heard this in the past, who may be watching from home, but the board certainly has knowledge of this, in that the Hayes Elementary School Roofing Project that we're requesting approval for RTA to be engaged to design and run construction programs during the summer of '21, that is an add-on to a contract. Approximately a year ago, the board had approved for Roofing Technology Associates to design and do construction project, oversee construction for the summer '21 programs. We already have Riley and Randolph on tap for that. Once we got down to the finalization of our 10-year roofing program, we did notice that Hayes was, in the summer of '21, slated for summer of '21 as an appropriate year based upon our sinking fund. So this is simply an add-on to the Riley and Randolph portion of that. So this, these are planned projects, planned design, all based upon our 10-year facilities plan, using the sinking fund. So we do recommend approval to bring RTA on to add design of Hayes, along with Randolph and Riley, for the summer of '21 roofing program.
Thank you, Mr. Francis.
You're welcome.
Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Centers, to approve Roofing Design and Construction Services from RTA. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries, thank you. That takes us to item 6C, Approval of Bid Results for District Network Fiber Project, 2013 Bond. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Frank.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the recommendation to award the contract for installation of the district's wide area network to AMCOM Communications, Inc., Brighton, Michigan, in the amount of $1,621,928.54, and authorize the superintendent or her designate to negotiate and execute the final contract. Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. And again, we'll hear from Mr. Francis.
Thank you, sir. The fiber project is a planned project through the 2013 bond. The original project and scope of that project, as discussed at the committee, the whole, has been expanded for a couple of reasons. One, the project originally was to connect the district's fiber, and that was what was originally budgeted into the 2013 bond, meaning that would give us a redundancy. It would quote-unquote "close the loop" on our fiber network, giving us a continuous loop, so that if there's a cut anywhere, we would have less down fiber, less outages at our school buildings. So that was the original plan. Through savings throughout the course of the bond, and costs of technology coming down, in the technology budget of the bond, we have enough money, we had, noticed enough money to expand that. The current fiber network the district has is pushing 20 years old, which was the original estimated lifespan of our, of our network. So as we close in on the end of life on that network, it was decided to go out and completely replace what we have, as well as add that final section to close the loop and give us redundancy. So this project would give us completely new fiber throughout the district, armored fiber, fiber, which is stronger, protected against, you know, rodent-like squirrels trying to chew through, and actually has more of a 30-year life expectancy now we would put them in. So we recommend the board approve the fiber network program.
Thank you, Mr. Francis.
You're welcome.
Do I have questions or comments from the board? Mrs. Bonnefield.
I would just like to point out that this is one of those examples where we are constantly, central office is constantly reviewing and looking at different projects that we have going on. We don't just get stuck in a rut and move forward. Times change. One, we plan way ahead, so, you know, things are always changing. And two, we always have our, you guys always have your eyes open for new things, how we can do things better, how we can expand our projects, you know, how we can do things more economically. And I just want to, kudos to all of you guys for always, you know, not throwing the project in the drawer and whipping it out when it's time, but you're constantly always looking for ways to improve everything. And so I have to point out that this is one of those examples where, you know, we were able to do more and make the project better and more economical. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will say that that's a team effort. I want to thank our IT department, Mr. Tim Clan, who's the administrator of IT, as well as our owner's rep for technology, Barton Mallow, being, everybody kind of being on the ball and on the same page, to find this as an example, as a, you know, a prudent move to do at this time.
Thank you, Mrs. Bonnefield. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Francis, just to reiterate, this is, this includes both the physical fiber as well as the installation of that, is that correct?
Correct. And for those at home, and again, if you didn't see the committee meeting, we went into quite a bit of detail about this.
Correct.
But this is literally AMCOM going up on the poles through miles and miles and miles of the city, and changing out the actual cables up on the poles that run throughout the city, connecting all of the buildings in the district, all the school buildings, to central office here.
And this is going to take a period of time?
This is going to take many months, yes. Yes, probably, at best, 12 months, if not longer.
When do we expect the project to begin?
Begin, we have to get the contracts together. Board has to approve first, obviously. And then we have to get the contracts together, procure the fiber, and that would be actually AMCOM's responsibility to procure the fiber. I don't have an exact estimated start date, but with the weather starting to break, I think it would be reasonable to say that once they can procure the fiber. So once the board approves this and we get the contracts going, I can get an estimated start for you and give it to Mrs. Oakwood, she can put it into your update.
Great, appreciate it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, for the approval of bid results for District Network Fiber Project 2013 Bond. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. And President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. That takes us now to item 7A, Teachers for Approval. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Bradford.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and offer employment for the 2019-20 school year to the teachers listed on the attached document.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mrs. Burton. And Mr. Archibald is going to help us tonight with this.
Good evening, thank you, President Johnson. These individuals were interviewed along with other applicants for vacancies that existed in our instructional program. We believe the individuals listed are most qualified for the positions and recommend that these individuals be approved for employment.
Thank you, Mr. Archibald. Questions or comments from the board? Mrs. Burton.
Mr. Archibald, this does happen periodically, but it is an unusual time of the year to be hiring teachers. Are these replacements for folks who are retiring mid-year, or what's their situation?
It's a combination. They are mainly replacements for mid-year retirements, resignations, and alike.
Okay, all right. And this is all within our current budget?
Yes, it is, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Burton. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mrs. Burton, for the approval of teachers. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. That takes us to item 7B, Teachers for Tenure. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mr. Centers.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent. Acknowledge that tenure status has been granted to the following teacher, effective on the respective date. Jillian Black, February 5, 2020.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. And Mr. Archibald.
Yes, the requirements during tenure include years of service and satisfactory performance as reflected on multiple annual year-end evaluations. We ask that the board acknowledge that tenure has been obtained by the individuals listed.
Thank you, Mr. Archibald. Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, to grant tenure status to the specified teacher. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. And President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries, thank you. That takes us to item 7C, Leave of Absence. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the request for leave of absence as listed below. Mary Kay Weaver, effective February 10, 2020.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Frank. And again, this is Mr. Archibald.
Yeah, just to confirm for the board that this request for a leave is in accordance with the LEA collective bargaining agreement, and as such, we would request that the leave be approved, as requested for the remainder of the 2019-20 school year.
Thank you, Mr. Archibald. Are there any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Frank, to approve the leave of absence. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. That takes us to item 7D, which is resignations, and this is for board information, does not require a motion. So we'll go to item 7E, Resolutions of Appreciation for Employees Who Are Retiring. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Frank.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached resolutions of appreciation for the services rendered by Emmett Allen, Julie Badge, Christina Kotny, Brian Cullen, Lisa Fisco, Judith Polcy, Edward Urbansky, and Jason Young. Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Burton. Mr. Archibald, again.
Yes, tonight we bring before you the names of eight, count them, eight, employees who are retiring with a combined 201 years, count them, 201 years of experience with Livonia Public Schools. I would like to, on behalf of the district, offer my sincere congratulations and ask that the board adopt the attached resolutions of appreciation in recognition of their years of dedicated service to the students and to the district.
Thank you, Mr. Archibald. Questions or comments from the board?
Congratulations, yes.
It's a...
Congratulations.
It's always nice to hear people retire, but you don't like to lose that many years of service and institutional knowledge. It's tough, but we do appreciate their years of service and wish them the best in their next endeavor. So we have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Burton, to accept the resolutions of appreciation for employees who are retiring. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. That will take us to item 8A, Hearing from Board Members. And this is, A is Second Reading of Board Bylaws. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Burton.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the policy committee and adopt board policy language per the attached documents for the following board bylaws. Bylaw BA, Goals and Objectives. Bylaw BAA, Goal Setting Meetings. Bylaw BBA, School Board Officers. Bylaw BBAA, Method of Electing Board Officers. Bylaw BBABA, Duties of the President. Bylaw BBABB, Duties of the Vice President. Bylaw BBABC, Duties of the Secretary. Bylaw BBABE, Duties of the Treasurer. Bylaw BBB, New Board Member Orientation.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Bradford. And Mrs. Oakwood, do you want to run us through these?
We were just, we were going to just do a cursory review.
Correct.
That we are on the second reading of these bylaws. They primarily have to do with, as the titles indicate, the election of officers, the role of officers on the Board of Education in setting goals and objectives for the district. For the most part, there were relatively minor changes, but some clarity of language and/or matching of aspects of the policy which best reflect our current practice. I will specifically mention bylaw BAA. That is goal-setting meetings. That previously, the policy had talked about the Board of Education meeting at least two times a year with the superintendent to review the direction and focus of the school district, and then set specific months for those. And as Mrs. Burton and I met, and then certainly as our entire team has reviewed, it really made more sense to say to review the goals and priorities of... it really made more sense to say to review the goals and priorities of the school district, because that really is the focus of those meetings, and that we would do that two times a year, but we would not necessarily designate a month. We generally do it at the conclusion of the calendar year, and that's normally part of the Superintendent's annual evaluation in January, and then we do goal-setting at the end of the summer as we're about to embark on the new school year. So, that one in particular had some additional changes, and then we really just clarified in the roles of the officers, how they would be elected, and if there was a vacancy, how those vacancies would be filled.
Thank you, Mrs. Oakwist, and are there any questions or comments from the board? I know that we have spent a lot of time going over these changes, although they were somewhat cursory, and appreciate everybody's involvement. So, if there are no other questions or comments, then we have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Bradford, to adopt the Board Policies that were specified in the motion. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes, and President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. That takes us then to Item 8B, and this is first reading of Board Bylaws, and we do have a number of them to go through, and Mrs. Oakwist, were you going to?
Yes.
Go through those?
We'll start with the first bylaw, BBBC, with regard to Board Member Expenses and Development Opportunities. We had a very simple change there in the first sentence stating that the district may pay reimbursement of costs, previously it said the board, and actually, the district is the one that pays out those expenses that are incurred by board members. So, we just swapped those two words out and made those changes in that policy. No changes have been made on that since our committee meeting.
Thank you. Everybody good with those two? All right, we'll move on to BBBE.
Thank you, this is in regard to Board Member Compensation. In each of these bylaws, if there was a subheading that was not necessarily relevant or helpful in the policy, we removed that subheading and simply made all of the language part of the policy as a whole. In this particular bylaw, in the third bullet, we added the word "individual" before committee meetings, as that is reflective of our practice. So, all individual committee meetings are scheduled on a night. Other than the night of a regular meeting, that would also count for compensation. So, we just added the word "individual," which has been current practice for many, many, many years.
Thank you, Mrs. Oakwist. Questions or comments, everybody good with that change? All righty, then we will move on to our next policy, which is BBC.
Okay, thank you, in this one, we also removed a subheading as part of that policy. And in the second paragraph, I'll read that, because we made a couple of changes there. The current language will read "Board Members. Serving on such committees shall function as liaisons between the Board of Education and District Administration and will make recommendations or advise the Board as a whole relative to their areas of study." So, this is in regard to Board Committees and how they function. We also eliminated the final sentence, which was related to the Audience Communication Policy, which really didn't have relevance as it related to the remainder of this policy. We do have an Audience Communication Policy, it's clearly written and stated as such, and so, because it was really not germane to the content of this bylaw, we removed that.
Thank you, Mrs. Oakwist, everybody good with those changes?
Yep.
All righty, then we'll go to Bylaw BBE.
Yes, this is in regard to the Board Attorney. We added one sentence at the end of the policy that says, "Contact with the Attorney/Attorneys shall be made by the Board President or the Superintendent," which is current district practice.
Everybody good with that correction?
Yep.
All right, then we'll move on to our next bylaw.
Bylaw BBF, Advisory Committees to the Board. There was a recommendation to the Policy Committee and subsequently by our Board that we remove this policy, because this is not a practice that currently exists with regard to Board Appointed Advisory Committees in the way that this is laid out. We do have Board Appointed Committees from time to time, and they function under the purview of District Administration, and so, we all agree that this was not a process that we utilize currently in the district, and it was previously, initially written in 1988, and so, we're recommending removal of this bylaw.
Thank you, Mrs. Oakwist, everybody good with, Mrs. Frank?
Yes, you stated this, but I just wanted to make sure, we do have advisory committees in the district, they're just not appointed by the Board. And that's the change.
Yes, we do.
Okay, answer the question? Any other comments, we good with this removal? All right, then we'll move to Board Policy BBH.
Thank you, this is in regard to Awards, Recognitions, and Certificates. Since it is the policy, or the bylaw, is one sentence, I will read it, because we did make some wording changes in there. The Board of Education may recognize individuals or groups by resolution or other means for outstanding contributions or other occasions as designated by the Board and/or the Superintendent.
Thank you, Mrs. Oakwist. Questions, comments on this? All right, we're all good with that? All right, then we'll move down to our next.
Thank you.
Bylaw BC.
Yes, Board of Education Meetings. So, this bylaw states that the Board welcomes and encourages attendance at meetings. It also talks about that the schedule of regular Board Meetings shall be approved in July and published and/or posted in accordance with law. We did remove the third paragraph, which spoke to being placed on a mailing list for agendas to be sent in advance when time permits. That really, this really was created at a time when, initially in 2001, when having agendas and all the related materials were not available online. Now, they are not only available online, they're available online during the week prior, and with all of the attachments, it's available not only prior to the meeting, but that remains up for years after the meeting, and so, the materials are much more readily accessible. However, if it was requested that someone did receive that, we would certainly continue that practice if necessary. It then states that opportunities for citizens to address the Board shall be provided through Audience Communications, and that agendas for all Board Meetings shall be available on the school district's website in addition to the minutes of all voting meetings, following their approval by the Board. So, really, clean up of some language to really reflect current practice and current day technology and availability to materials.
Thank you. Everyone good with that language? Good to move forward? All right, then we'll move to Bylaw BCA.
And this is in regard to the Annual Organizational Meeting, and so, that takes place in July, and it states with the exception of electing officers, which takes place in January. It also states that the Executive Assistant for the Board of Education shall post that meeting notice and the scheduled meetings within 10 days after the organizational meeting, and that such notice shall include the name, address, and phone number of the Board Office, and the date, time, and location of meetings.
All right, we all good with that change? All right, then we will go to the last one in this group, which is BCAB.
Yes. So, this speaks to, referring to the Board of Education Offices as the District's Administration Building. It also details what information would be included in public notice with regard to any meeting schedule changes. As you know, we have requirements that any public notice of a change in a regular meeting must be posted at least 18 hours prior to the meeting, and that's to be certain that any community member who is interested in doing so may have advanced notice of any changes in the meeting schedule. I wanted to clarify that the law requires that the meeting date and time of regular meetings can only be changed by a vote of the Board. However, the location of a meeting can be changed, and notice should be given to the community if the location changes. That is extraordinarily rare, but there may be a situation where you may be expecting a larger audience than usual, or you have a power outage in this building, and we're not able to hold the Board Meeting, but we can do it at another site. You are not required to have a vote to change the location, just the date and time. So, this really, this bylaw and these changes really just clarify that process.
Thank you, Mrs. Oakwist, everyone good with the changes here?
Yes.
All right, so that is the last in this group, and this will be brought for a second reading at our next voting meeting, and we will bring that as a group as we had done earlier with the second reading of Board Bylaws. Mrs. Bonnefield?
Mrs. Oakwist?
Yes.
Just to clarify, all these changes to our meetings are all within the Regulations of the Open Meetings Act?
They are, yes. We not only, Mrs. Wozniak, Mrs. Burton and I reviewed in thorough detail the Open Meetings Act and also consulted with MASP's Legal Counsel, Mr. Bonancic.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so, these will all be brought on for a second reading at our next regular voting meeting that will be in March. So, that takes us to Item 8C, First Reading of Board Policy EBBCB, Weapons on District Property. And Mrs. Oakwist?
Yes, we will, we would like to review a brand-new policy. It's a policy that the Board and our Board Administration Team have been working on for the better part of a year, but have reviewed it, quite frankly, over a number of years as we watch this topic really covered in great detail by districts, surrounding districts, with regard to the state law as it relates to weapons on school property. As you know, court cases that took place based on cases brought forth from Clio School District and Ann Arbor Schools really brought to light this issue of a loophole in state law that did allow concealed weapon permit holders to open carry on school property. And so, we have studied this issue both with our District Administration Team as well as our Board Team and the Policy Committee for a number of months, and recommend the policy you see before you entitled Weapons on District Property. What I'd like to do is read through the policy and then invite members of our Board Team here who were part of that work to add any other comments that they'd like to make on this important policy. So, it's going to be found under Business Management, and it will be entitled Weapons on District Property. The Livonia Public Schools School District prohibits firearms and other weapons on district premises, in district vehicles, and at district-related functions. Exceptions can be made for persons with written approval from the district's current Superintendent, weapons in the possession and under the control of law enforcement, and weapons in the possession of LPS-authorized security personnel. Additionally, a parent or legal guardian of an LPS student who is a properly licensed concealed weapon carrier is not precluded from carrying a concealed pistol on school property while remaining in their vehicle as they drop off their student at school or pick up their student from school. District employees and students who violate this policy are subject to discipline, including permanent termination or expulsion. Others who violate this policy are subject to being banned from district premises and district-related functions. The Superintendent or Superintendent's designee shall refer a person who knowingly violates this policy to law enforcement officials. The term "weapon" means any object which, in the manner in which it is used, is intended or represented to be used, is capable of inflicting bodily harm, property damage, or endangering the health and safety of any person, persons. Staff members and students shall immediately report to Administration any knowledge of dangerous weapons and/or threats of violence by students, staff members, or visitors to a school or to the district. Failure to report such information may subject the staff member to disciplinary action up to and including termination. Note, this policy does not prevent the appropriate use of starter pistols in sporting events. And then there are legal references below.
Thank you, Mrs. Oakwist. Are there questions or comments from the board? Mrs. Burton?
Thank you for the very thorough explanation, Mrs. Oakwist, I appreciate it. Likewise, I would like to thank the Clio and the Ann Arbor School Districts and their Boards of Education for taking the brave move to pursue this, so that all of the other districts in the state of Michigan did not need to while this was playing out. It was no doubt costly to go through the court system, but to finally get some recognition or some direction, really, from the Supreme Court of the state of Michigan that in fact, the school districts do have a right to write policy that bans weapons from their districts. This is not something that any of us have taken lightly, and I, and I'm sure others, recognize there are two sides to this issue and different thoughts on whether, frankly, what is the safest way to have our students and our staff in our buildings. I've talked to some folks who are concealed weapons permit holders, who on initial conversation wanted to have the right to carry their weapons into our schools. And with a relatively short amount of conversation, I also expressed my concern that if I were to let... Basically, we have to write one policy for everybody. If I'm to let certain people carry their weapons into schools, that means I have to, as a Board Member, allow anyone who has gone through the course and has their permit to carry their weapons into their schools. That is something that I am not comfortable with. I recognize the pros and cons of both, I certainly recognize the rights of gun owners, but our first responsibility is the safety of our students. As a Board Member who's responsible for writing policy on this, I do not feel comfortable allowing anybody who has a permit to walk into our schools and bring their weapons in with them. I know that we have talked to the police and gotten their opinion on this situation over the years as we watched this unfold through the court system, before we really had the ability to write policy on it. One concern that the police had is that until we write such policy as we're looking at tonight, if somebody is on our campus with a weapon, we can contact the police, they could request that the individual remove their weapon from our campus, but they really had no legal right to insist that they do so unless this Board of Education writes policy saying that we are not permitting weapons on our campuses. If a case were to happen like that, the police officers could follow an individual around our campus, but they could not insist that they remove the weapon from our campus. Another concern that the police brought to our attention is if we had, God forbid, we had a shooter situation on our campus, our police need to know with absolute clarity who's the good guy and who's the bad guy. If we have other citizens who are brandishing weapons, the police will not have time to stop and figure out, are you the one who's supposed to have the gun or not supposed to have the gun here today? They expressed a great deal of concern along that line. Again, I recognize there are pros and cons, I recognize that nothing is 100% foolproof, but given the choice of either everyone is allowed to have weapons in our schools if they are a permit holder, or only our police officers or otherwise deemed security people that are approved by our Superintendent are allowed to have weapons, I feel safer going with the latter, and therefore, I'm fully in support of this policy that we're writing tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. Burton, other questions, comments? Mrs. Frank?
Thank you. I appreciate the district's work on this policy and for Vice President Burton leading the way in many areas of it. And I appreciate also that you worked with the Livonia Police Department to create the policy, and I believe looked at several other policies in several other districts before we wrote our policy. So, we have learned from many other districts, and education is changing today, our society is changing, and things that are happening today didn't happen 20 years ago, and I... And I know that especially in our culture today, there is a right and there is a wrong and people choose that side and get angry with whatever side is, is different. And I think that we have to look at this not as a debate and as a way to talk through things, but really what is best for our children. Schools are the only place where we have so many children under the age of 18 and so few adults. And so it is our responsibility as Board of Education, and I think we take this very seriously when we make these policies, we have to do what's best for these children. And just as we heard earlier about the trauma that kids go through, we've got to do what's best for them. And as I look at my eight-year-old and think if she's walking down the hall to go to the restroom or she's walking down the hall to go to the office and someone comes in with an open carry pistol, what is her reaction going to be? She doesn't say, oh, are you allowed to carry that? Did you get permission from the office? That is a scary thing for kids when they're growing up with so many school shootings and so many things going on. So I think that instead of, of looking at this as a right or a wrong, what is best for the kids, and I think that that's the best way to look at that, but I just appreciate this. This is a, a policy that goes into effect for all of our kids and it's going to keep our kids safe in terms of, of not only what goes on in the school, but like Vice President Burton said, it's, it's either all or none. And so we had to choose those two, between those two of all or none. And so I think that this is a wise choice. I think that none of us have taken it lightly, no matter what our stance is on gun rights or gun control, we've done what we thought is the best for the kids and our staff.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Mrs. Bonnefield.
I would like to just be thankful that, I'm glad that this is a district-by-district decision. I think for our community, I strongly believe that this is the right decision. It may not be the right decision for other communities. So I think it's, it's great that we're able to, in our situation, in our district, to be able to make the choice for ourselves and that the, the state of Michigan gives us that opportunity. The other question I have, and I'm going to go back to my question, let's just talk about MCL. We have gone just through, we've talked about talking about the police, but this is also in alignment with the state of Michigan law, correct?
It is.
And we've had, we've also reviewed this legally as well? No? Yes?
I don't recall. I don't, I don't believe so. I don't believe we sent this to legal.
No, but have we, with, uh, uh, Mr. Bananick?
Not this particular policy. No, we, what we did review is we reviewed from Neola, which is a, a national organization that sets board policy across the nation.
Okay.
Neola's policy on weapons on district property is one that many districts surrounding us have used.
Okay.
Many, much of this language is in alignment with that. We did add some of our own clarifications as we worked through this policy. Really there, all of this is in accordance with state law.
Okay.
If there's anything in particular that the board would like us to, to run past Mr. Bananick, we certainly can, but it is congruent with the allowable policies that we, we are under, that are under our purview as a school district.
Perfect. That's what I was looking for. Thank you.
Mrs. Jarvis, did you have something?
Yes, thank you, President Johnson. This is not a policy that we made in a vacuum. We had input from law enforcement, we had input from state law, and we worked very hard and diligently over an extended period of time on this. I think one important thing to recognize is how powerless law enforcement is to uphold our policies until we give them a policy to uphold. It's impossible for them to act against the bad guy with a gun if we don't have a policy that says what that stipulates and how that, how we feel about having that gun on our district property. So this policy enables law enforcement to act in an appropriate manner and that's really fundamental.
Mrs. Bradford.
Thank you, President Johnson. I agree with all my colleagues, especially with Mrs. Frank regarding, everybody has a different opinion on how we should put our policies into place, but I think for the safety of our kids and for our community, this was the right decision to make as far as not prohibiting firearms on our campuses. I think, and I agree with Mrs. Bonnefield, that maybe other, other communities may feel differently and, and, and that's great that we have that opportunity, that the Clio and Ann Arbor School Districts went through the court system and allowed us to make that decision. So we, we, I agree, we didn't take it lightly and I think it's a good policy for us and for this district.
Thank you, Mrs. Burton. Mrs., Mr. Centers.
I just want to touch on that. I think our district does a lot of thinking about student safety and the implications on policies and from the structures of our buildings to the policies that we have. You know, everyone here is very reflective and thoughtful about what's best for kids. So this again is one of those things that has gone through a thoughtful process, lots of consultation and so for that reason, you know, I'll be very supportive and I'm glad that, again, everyone works so hard and, you know, really put kids first, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Centers. Mrs. Oakquist, did you have something?
I do. President Johnson, I know we've reviewed this many, many times in our subcommittees, but I think it would make most sense if we moved paragraph four up to paragraph three. So that is the definition when we're defining weapon. And then have the two, the expectations for employees and students, those two paragraphs together. So we would go from the first where it prohibits the firearms, weapons, the exceptions defines the term weapons and then moves on to the expectations. So it would make most sense to-
Flip them.
If we, if we just switch those, the order of those two, if the board does not have an objection to that.
Would everybody agree?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for the suggestion. Mrs. Burton?
This is just a grammatical thing. I do appreciate the addition after, in the course of our meetings when we, in the second paragraph added of an LPS student, when we're talking about a parent or legal guardian of an LPS student, but I do suggest that we take the parentheses off.
Agreed.
Is that okay?
The reason we did that, it makes it sound like it's the student-
The student who would be the properly licensed concealed weapon carrier. We thought maybe, we just wanted to avoid any confusion with that.
Oh, I understand now. Okay. I see your point. Okay. Then that's fine. And as a follow-up to, I don't remember whose suggestion at this point, Mrs. Oakquist, can we, before we do our, our next reading next month, can we run this by legal and just make certain?
Of course.
We've, we're pretty sure we've covered that, but I want to make absolutely certain before we go ahead and pass it.
Certainly.
Whether that's, M A S B's legal or our own legal, either one, but they're pretty much in agreement with one another, so thank you.
Mrs. Bonnefield?
One other item that I just wanted to point out is I think guns can be very polarizing, but I think we have a good representation on our board of people with different opinions about guns. Several of our board members are, we have hunters and CPL carriers and so this is not, I, I just, I think it's important to note that this isn't just an, because it, we're a group of anti-gun people. I think, you know, we all understand and appreciate that we have guns in our society, that we have handguns in our society, and that, again, this really is about our kids and, and what we're doing with them and in no way is a stance on gun control, I guess is what I'm trying to say. That is, everybody's mentioned, this has been a long, long time coming. It's been very thoughtful and it, it really is about how are we going to keep our kids safe? And, and I want, just don't want people to think that this is an anti-gun stance from us or knee-jerk reaction to try and make some kind of a, a public comment on, on whether or not people should carry guns, so.
Any other questions or comments? All right, so other than flipping those two paragraphs, we're good with the language to bring this forward?
Yes.
To the next voting meeting?
Yes.
All right, then we'll put it on for a second reading on the March meeting. Okay, so that then takes us to item eight D, approval for board members to take M A S B classes. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
President Johnson.
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Sorry. You guys are all so helpful. Okay, hold on a second. I have to make sure I write down that I made the motion so I don't forget. Okay, here we go. Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve that Board trustees Karen Bradford, Crystal Frank, Liz Jarvis, and Mark Johnson take an M A S B class on March 12th at Wayne Risa offered through the Wayne County Association of School Boards, W C A S B. The initial cost will be $90 per person. W C A S B will refund 50% of the cost back to the district, bringing the final actual cost to the district of $180.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Burton. Questions or comments from the board?
President.
Mrs. Frank?
I just wanted to express our thanks to Wayne Risa for offering these that are here and local and that they subsidize the cost. I think that it's a great way to invest in the local school board, so I just wanted to give that shout out to the Wayne Risa for doing that for us.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Any other questions or comments? I, I would just like to, again, this is just another indication of the dedication of this board to continue their education as it relates to board improvement. You guys go above and beyond and I think not only myself, but the community appreciates it as well, so thank you. So we have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Burton for the approval for board members to take M A S B class. And Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the roll, please?
I can. Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
And President Johnson?
Yes, the motion carries. So that takes us to the last item on our agenda, which is item eight E, hearing from board members. And as is our custom, I will open it up to my colleagues for comments or whatever they have to say this evening. Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you, President Johnson. I just wanted to announce for those who follow our robotics, that our Livonia Warriors and Livonia Tyros team have wrapped up the six-week build season. That's a crazy rush of a time and the kids have a ball building, two robots, one for each team, that will compete in the game and now we enter our competitive season. This past weekend, we had what was called a Week Zero event hosted by the Tyros and the Warriors at Dickinson Center. We invited teams from around the metro Detroit area to come and play on our full-size model field. This is an incredible opportunity for teams to test a robot that is yet untried and see how well it performs its designated tasks. I went there and didn't tell anyone I was from Livonia and heard amazing comments. We had teams coming from all over Rochester, St. Clair Shores, and everywhere in between. And I was talking to parents of other teams who were commenting that this is one of the most valuable weekends for them because there are so few opportunities to find a model field that's to scale where they can test their robot. So there was a lot of appreciation from around the area for that field and we, we do appreciate having that opportunity and extending it to our neighbors as well as the opportunity to scope out the competition. It's a very fierce game, it's a fun game, and we'd like you to mark your calendars for March 27th and 28th when Churchill will host the competition.
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. Anyone else? Mrs. Bradford?
Thank you, President Johnson. Last Friday, I had the opportunity to attend the, a basketball game played by the Western Wayne Skill Center. They all traveled over to Stevenson and I just, it was such a delightful event and enjoyed every, every moment of it. And I was so impressed with the, the students who played in the basketball game as well as they had some cheer, pom or little routine at the half and they had a wonderful student who sang the National Anthem. And, and one of the best parts was it was run during the lunch hour and I looked up in the stands and the stands were filled with Stevenson High School students and it was so great to see because we play basketball games there and we don't even get that many crowd, so we don't draw a crowd like that. So apparently they came in on their lunch hour and they filled up the stands and they ate their lunches and they watched the game and it was delightful. So thank you, Jen Tariel and your group for doing the travel to the different high schools. I think they also go to each other high schools and visit and I think that's just a great opportunity for some inclusion and getting everybody to have a great time. So it was a wonderful event and I can't wait to go next year, so thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bradford. Other questions, comments? Mrs. Frank?
Thank you. This Thursday and Friday, I believe that there is the music festival and Churchill is hosting it and that is all of the district's bands and orchestras and perform, are performing at Churchill. So it's middle school and high school and I was able to go on Thursday night and get a little preview of Churchill's orchestra and their jazz band and Holmes's orchestra and they do a phenomenal job. And I think it's great that Holmes is, or that Churchill is hosting it for the district and so many schools are going to be coming and those musicians have a great time showing off for, for the judges that are going to be there, so that's going to be an exciting day as well.
Can you tell us, do you know what the times?
It is Thursday and Friday at Churchill. Unfortunately, all of that I know. So I know that Stevenson is performing at 2:30 and Holmes is performing at 7:30 in the evening, but I assume that there are all day on Thursday and all day on Friday.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Anything else from the board? Seeing none, we've come to the end of the agenda. Is there any other business to be brought before the, the board tonight? Seeing none, then we are adjourned. Thank you.